I now call the Huntsville City Council Meeting to order. If all of you are able to and like to, please rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge allegiance led by the Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The minutes from the regular meeting held June 11th, 2015 have been received and they'll stand approved if there's no objections. The minutes from the special session held on June 16th, 2015 have been received and they'll stand approved if there's no objections. We're now at resolutions and special recognitions. Mayor, do you have anything tonight?
Uh, nothing tonight.
We have one resolution for adoption only. It's a resolution congratulating Bishop-elect Ernest A. Edwards on his consecration ceremony to be held June 27th, 2015 at True Light Church of God in Christ. The Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have no announcements. We have no business with outside legal representation. We do have public hearings to be held. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 15-313 zoning new annexed property lying on the east side of Research Park Boulevard and on the north side of Plummer Road to Commercial Industrial Park District. This was set May 14th, 2015 at the regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols?
This property is newly annexed property. It's approximately 8.35 acres. It's located on the east side of Research Park Boulevard and on the north side of Plummer Road. It is currently vacant land and will be for a proposed industrial development. This item was recommended by Planning Commission at the May Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Public hearing is now closed. The Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kling. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 15-315 amending Article 23, General Business C-3 District, Section 23.1, uses permitted, Article 75, Alcoholic Beverage Establishment Regulations, Section 75.3, permitted establishment by districts, and Article 92, Board of Adjustments, Section 92.5, Powers and Duties, subsection 92.5.3, permitted uses as special exceptions by adding new subsection 92.5.337 to add language concerning alcoholic beverage manufacturers. This was set May 14th, 2015 at the regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols?
This proposed zoning ordinance amendment will remove alcoholic language concerning brew pubs and beer breweries from our Article 23, General Business C-3. Within our zoning ordinance, all of our alcoholic regulations are all contained under Article 75, so this will make the zoning ordinance consistent across the board with all of our alcoholic language contained in Article 75 only. Also, this will add a new clause for a special exception for alcoholic beverage manufacturers that conduct tastings or samplings on the licensed premises with or without entertainment. They shall be permitted within our general business C-3, highway business C-4, light and heavy industry, commercial industrial park, and airport commercial districts.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this issue? Ms. Reed, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Jackie Reed, 303 Jack Coleman Drive. Are we opening the gate for more alcohol all over the city? Permitted in all these different areas and everything? Open containers can walk around and everything? Does that have anything to do with this?
Um, no ma'am. This is not pertaining to the entertainment district. This is basically adding alcoholic beverage manufacturers as a special exception under particular districts which would include our heavy commercial and industrial districts.
So you're allowing the permitted districts tonight, but we don't have addresses or anything?
It would be via special exception. The companies, if they were interested in having tastings or samplings, they would go to our Board of Zoning Adjustments and they would request a special exception and they would also give their conditions and the Board could set any other additional conditions or stipulations that they see fit.
It's not the downtown entertainment district.
Oh, we'll be moving on any later, I'm sure. Thank you.
Sure. Would anybody else like to address the council on this issue? The public hearing is now closed. The Chair moves for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion.
Uh, question, Mr. President.
Sure, Ms. Kling.
Uh, Ms. Nichols, is, you talk about exceptions, okay, is this like a one-time deal? Is it like a one-year deal? Or is it a permanent? How does, how does the mechanisms work in case something doesn't go right?
For Board of Zoning Adjustment, the special exceptions are typically a year-to-year basis. The Board can impose more or less. That's completely up to their discretion. And it will primarily pertain to just the districts that are listed here. Currently, we do not permit any type of alcoholic beverage manufacturers that want tastings or sampling rooms, period. So this would give them an opportunity to have those in the city of Huntsville.
Further discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have no public hearings to be set. We do have communications from the public. When I call your name, please come to the microphone. You have three minutes to address the council. Michael Palamini?
Yeah, I'm Michael Palamini. I'm at 4519 Baywood Drive, southwest Huntsville. I am here in reference to the Uber ordinances and transportation ordinances. My Section 8, 152 has a lot of exclusions in it and it's, I feel unfair practice to have some of these exclusions and maybe whittle those down a little bit. Right now, last prom season, there was a vehicle, well, this was out of Athens, or had a 4-4 tag number, but it was a dealer tag, running prom students over to the Von Braun Center. You know, there's all sorts of essentially illegal services being provided now to the airport and other areas. And just kind of wondering how strict is the enforcement going to be? And can we, you know, restrict a little of these exclusions and make it fair for all drivers of any vehicles that are in town?
And we'll discuss that when that issue comes up.
Alright.
Thank you. Mr. Naaman Goode?
I'm Naaman Goode, N-A-A-M-A-N-G-O-O-D-E, 2102 C-4th Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, 35811. I'd like to speak to three issues regarding the northeast area, particularly the Chapman area in which I live. The first is streets. And by the remarks I make, I don't mean to denigrate our street people, but I'm wondering, has someone put out a rumor that there is gold buried under Oakwood Avenue? Because it has been dug up and dug up and patched and dug up and patched. If you get in that street westbound from Lehigh Drive all the way to the Parkway, it's basically patches. Even including the area in front of Hunley, the new street that's been brought out to Oakwood. And I'm sure someone in the engineering department understands all those markings that have been made on the pavement. I don't. But would someone please give me an idea of what's going on with Oakwood Avenue and when it's going to be repaired properly? Secondly, squirrels. Mr. Kling, you may recall that some few years ago, you and I exchanged email communications regarding the problem of squirrels in my particular area. Your response to my query was that you didn't know there was a problem. I thought my email would have advised you of that and I've seen no action taken. I tell you, if animal control comes into the northeast area, particularly around Philpott Park, you'll see squirrels in just about every yard. Not just a squirrel, but several squirrels. So squirrels are a problem. They can carry disease. Thirdly, as President of the Huntsville Council Neighborhood Associations, I and several other members met in this very chamber on July the 19th, 2014, in a work session with this group, minus Ms. Robinson, and in her place was Mr. Olszewski, regarding neighborhood concerns, items of interest in our particular neighborhoods. One that had come up in our HCNA meetings on numerous occasions was the fact that we have absentee landlords in our areas and we have properties, rental properties in particular, that are not maintained. A lot of discussion went back and forth that evening and the burden seemed to follow Mr. Hamilton to do something about it. And Mr. Hamilton promised that he could provide a response within 60 days. We are now over 365 days and I've not heard anything from anyone. Not from Mr. Hamilton, not from any of the council members, nor from the President of the council, nor the mayor. So I'd like to know what's going on with that effort that was begun over a year ago and we were promised a response within 60 days. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hatfield, could you come and address Oakwood Avenue? I know the answer, but will you just let the public?
Oakwood's on list be repaved from Parkway to Andrew Jackson. It's still about 30 days out because the gas department, the utilities, still working, making repairs. Soon as they get through, we'll be paving it.
So just for the citizens' benefit, all the utilities have been repaired that they could find? They've been digging up the holes?
That's correct. We checked. Before we resurface, we want all utilities lines checked and the sewer lines.
And so you've done that? You fixed them all? Hopefully we won't have to dig it up once it's repaved?
That's correct. And I think the gas department is still about 30 days away from being finished.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton, could you address the outside landlords?
Yeah, so, you know, I know exactly the work session he's talking about. We've had the staff do some analysis and look at what the options may be. At this point, we have not identified options that the administration's been comfortable bringing to council to amend ordinances and things. So, you know, it's a project that, quite frankly, has been set aside as we look for options. There's a few initiatives that, particularly as it relates to apartments, is where we focus most of the efforts as opposed to the single-family home. As we've looked at that issue, the issues that we see emanating out of neighborhoods with single-family homes are very different. The conditions are different and some of the issues are different than apartments. And so what the mayor's asked us to do is focus more of the tension on the apartment complexes. About a month and a half or so ago, Captain McMurray came and gave a brief update to council on the Gold Star Program, which is where we have focused that attention. But to be completely honest with you, we have not identified solutions that the administration's been comfortable with as it relates to the rental properties, predominantly the single-family home-type neighborhoods.
Mr. President, I'll say this. Ms. Hamilton was exactly right. We have not come to something. We have looked at the problem. You know, when you look at the problem, 50% of the calls that we get for community development, which is basically our good neighbor policy, going out, making sure that people are doing the right things in their yards and keeping their houses up to certain standards, the standards that we have established here in the city of Huntsville. When you look at those, you know, 50% of them are homeowners who are occupying their own homes and another 50% are the rental ones. And so we haven't found the overwhelming ticket that says, hey, we're going to solve a lot of things by going and having a total registration of homeowners or having some kind of system with the homeowners that, you know, we have a contact number and everything else, just because of the sheer volume of what we're talking about and the manpower that it would take to keep up with it. You know, we work with community development on a daily basis trying to keep up with this to make sure that we understand it. And at this point, we just, we really have looked at it and looked at it pretty strong, but we have not felt like that it's in the best interest of the city to put the money that we would have to put in manpower and data entry and everything else we would have to do to have a registration of every homeowner who was renting houses in the city of Huntsville. So, Naaman, I'm sorry, we haven't gotten back with you, but we have looked at it in the 50/50. And am I right on 50/50, Mr. Hamilton? Is that about right? 50 or 60, 40 or somewhere in there? When we were looking at that, that was kind of our telltale figure of what we were going out in the houses that we were looking at. And with 50/50, we just didn't feel like that it was enough to justify what it was going to cost with us. And I'm sorry, we have not gotten back with you on that because we should have.
Mr. Bob Boyet?
Mr. President, there's a third item?
Squirrels. Sorry. Mr. Kling, you want to take squirrels?
I'll take squirrels. Uh, we, without being facetious, we, there's a squirrel problem. No getting beside that. There have been white squirrels that have been caught and taken to the botanical garden to try to keep in that area. Those squirrels, and I think Mr. Boyet might even be one of the people who could identify it. Those squirrels, white squirrels, have been identified and spotted later over in Bailey Patton Estates and Tryna Village and also over into Holiday Homes. They're just an abundance of them. I don't know what the answer is. I think animal control. I think I see Dr. Shepherd there. I don't know if she's got anything she wants to add to it, but they're all over the place. They're northeast, northwest, southeast, southwest. And I don't know what the solution is, but they have been caught, taken to the botanical garden, and then they've ended up released and found miles away.
Well, I'm not concerned about the white ones.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry. If you're going to talk, you don't have to go to the microphone. We have a record.
I'm not concerned about the white ones that may have been transplanted over to another area. I'm concerned about the gray ones that are in my yard that dig flowers up out of pots that eat the squirrel crop off, I mean, the pecan crop off my trees. That's the ones I'm concerned about and there are plenty of them. So if we know it's a problem, do we just say, well, it's a problem? We don't have any solution. No, it's a problem. Let's work on a solution. If I need to work on that solution, I'll be glad to do so.
We've got animal control. Have you got some solutions or some ideas you want us to look into?
Some years past, animal control services used to bring traps out to you. They ceased to do that. You could go and pick one up and sign for it and once you caught a squirrel in it, you could call them and they would come and pick up that squirrel. And now they no longer do that. So I have my own trap, my own catch-alive trap. And that's what I do.
Do you want to address anything, Dr. Hill?
What he's stating is true. We have discontinued handling nuisance wildlife. There's an abundant amount of urban natural wildlife, squirrels being one of those that people can find as a nuisance. They're here to stay. I understand about your pecans. I think a lot of people get frustrated. And there really are not a lot of, hate to say there aren't a lot of easy solutions, but we have to learn to live with them. Creating a way for the squirrels not to get up in the trees is probably the best way to go.
I'd have to cut down my tree.
Oh.
I'm sorry, again.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Boyet?
But we can talk one-on-one behind.
My name's Bob Boyet. I live at 3312 Village Drive, southwest Huntsville, Alabama. I'm here today to talk about the botanical gardens, shutting down dumping for professional tree services, putting chips over in the designated area. Apparently, there's been some illegal dumping going on over there and it's cost to the city a lot of money through the channels of people that I've talked to. And now they've just completely shut down that dump site. You know, it's a green thing and it's good for the city and I hate to see that go away. I just hate to see that. I think a couple cameras properly placed maybe over in the botanical garden area to catch the perpetrators would fix the problem. They do have a $1,000 reward and I've been by trying to collect and nobody's dumped over there. My number two issue is wires, cable wires hanging off the telephone poles. It's a state ordinance after it's reported after five days that it's, the particular companies are in violation. I don't have time to send Mr. Kling. He's been very helpful in identifying some of the problems, but they're all over the city, all over Madison, everywhere. I'm out in the streets every day. I have a small business and I see it all the time. And back where I grew up in Pontiac, Michigan, that would have been entertainment for us to take a cable wire at night and stretch it across the street and have a car come by and watch it roll down the road. That's kind of entertainment that could happen and I don't want to see that happen, somebody getting twisted up in it. If we have a bad storm, there's going to be wires flying around everywhere. We don't need extra wires. Oh, and I'd like to add one more thing since I'm here, if that's okay?
Sure.
Is possibly some kind of a special ordinance. I have a tree service and it gets extremely hot during the day and we're limited on what time we can start firing up saws, which is 7 o'clock in the city. And I was hoping to maybe get some kind of special amendment through the summer because, and maybe start at 6 o'clock. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Jackie Reed?
Could I make a comment?
Sure.
Mr. Boyet, if you do have time, we do have that See Click Fix app that you can put on your cellphone, just take a picture of it and say wires, and it will tell where it is and it will spot it geospatially. It will spot it on a map and everything so somebody can come out and take care of that. If you just have time to do it as you go by and see one, if you just would take a second and click it and then ship in there, put on their wires down, they will take care of it. And we've got a system in there to start figuring out whose wires it is and fix that. So just a thought.
Ms. Reed?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for the public input. I want to wish everyone a safe and happy 4th of July. I want to tell the public and give them a warning about the city council parking area up here. On my daughter-in-law's birthday, we went to the pizza place across the street. I guess I parked a car I had for sale over here, one of the council members designated area. So they might come all hours of the night, so stay out of that area. You'll get a ticket. I got a ticket. I didn't see it. Two weeks later, on Bob Wallace, on the car for sale, nothing ticket shows up. You can't even read it. And I'd been driving the car and showing it for sale and everything. And there's that ticket sitting there. Now, how it got on Bob Wallace over there, I don't know, when the car tag says Jack Coleman. There's some whole lot of stuff going on in town, but he's got a picture of the white car. Stay away from the city council parking areas, please. That's their territories 24 hours a day. Stay away from it. And I would like to know, maybe you can answer some of my questions, I've got a lot of them, little about Old Madison Pike. We've been eight years on that now and I don't hear too much about it anymore. Also, would like to know what's going on at Calhoun College. People are calling me every day wanting me to tell them what's going on over there. I personally don't know. I do not know what all them roads, changing the roads and all everything going on over there. I don't know anything about it. I'd like to know how much money we borrowed on a Tuesday when I had to work. I couldn't come to the meeting, so sort of tell the public how much money did we borrow, refinance, or what did we do? And I'll ask you later what we're going to do with all that money we borrowed. I know you're going to put some up in some roads. I went to the planning department meeting the other night and it is very powerful. Westland School sold a week earlier over the school board. The public, the people didn't know anything about it. There's where you got called snakes one night, remember? Snaking with the, things are going on. The planning department had it in their meeting. Public didn't know. They got a letter right at the planning department meeting. That was a week apart. Stop this mess. Let the public know what's going on. That's a school deal going on. And I want to clear this up. The federal courts did not put this city in this mess, like you say. The school board, elected officials sitting over there, and the superintendent, and you all are party to it, allowed what's going on in this city. Now, when Butler comes to the planning department, if I can stop it, I will. Don't start making your deals with your developers out here before we hear a little more about it. Don't tell me y'all don't know anything about it because it comes through the planning department. They've got the changes on it, you know it. That snake deal's going on. Stop it. The public has a right to know ahead of time. Anyway.
Ms. Reed, your time's up.
Bless y'all. Have a good weekend.
You too. Mr. Larry Thomas? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Reed, we owe you some answers as Mr. Shane?
Let me tell you, on the money borrowed, we just signed the documents today. We borrowed $70 million. $50 million goes in August to the Alabama Department of Transportation for roads, our portion of the Restore Our Roads. The other $20 million is the $20 million that has been in the capital plan for the past probably 10 years on the nadatorium. And we're finally, its time has finally come after 20 years to redo the nadatorium. And that's the nadatorium project. So that's where the $70 million goes.
And Ms. Reed, if you need the paperwork, I can print it out for you from my computer. Mr. Davis, could you give Ms. Reed an update or the public on Old Madison Pike and the road in front of Calhoun?
Yes, sir. Council members and Ms. Reed and the public, Old Madison Pike is approximately about 70% complete under construction. Most of the road is 100% complete, minus the wearing surface. We've had some issues with bridge beams when they got delivered with damage, but it's still on schedule to be completed and open by the end of the year. As for Wind Drive and Calhoun Community College, Calhoun, which has been widely publicized by Calhoun Community College building, new education building, and remodeling new facade to the existing Calhoun campus, and we're straightening out Wind Drive to help accommodate the increased traffic and to allow Calhoun to expand.
Thank you. Mr. Larry Thomas?
Yes, I want to speak to ordinance 15-414 where it's talking about the higher code of ordinances of the, for vehicles for hire, which is basically Uber, Lyft, Sidecar. There's, I went ahead and pulled up the resolution and looked at it. And one of the things that was an area of concern for me was on page 39 and 40 of this resolution where it was talking about, there's a minimum base rate that the city council has the capability to set and change, which is all about price fixing. And whether you have a meeting to discuss setting a price for a vendor or for a group of vendors, that is price fixing. And I would like to hear this kind of addressed later on when we get to this ordinance. The other thing that too, that I'm concerned with in this is there's some discussion about officers having the right to go ahead and pull up one of these apps and hire a driver and, you know, they could enter that they want to drive 30 miles away and there'd be a real customer that wants to drive 20 miles away. So an officer can put in that, put that data in to bait one of these cars to come by so that way they can go ahead and do a vehicle inspection on it. Well, that driver, that car is going to be out of work for that next customer. And I realize this also affects, you know, the taxi services and things of that nature, but I don't know if the taxi services get pulled over just as equally as the Uber drivers and Lyft drivers and Sidecar drivers. And a lot of times, these people that are using these apps, they will actually be drivers for all three networks or even more because there's more and more of these networks that are popping up all over the app stores and Google Play stores. But this is something that is a benefit to the consumer to be able to go out there and get cheap transportation. You wind up at the airport, if you, like, in section, or page 39 of this resolution talks about limousines, luxury vehicles, and special shuttles shall at a minimum base rate charge $35 an hour excluding other fees, gratuities, without prorating the first hour. And then the next one down below, it's vehicles for hire that charge in whole or part on hourly basis shall not prorate the first hour. So if you're going to get one of these luxury vehicles that come by and pick you up and you're only going half a mile away, are they going to hire you at $35 an hour? No, they're going to go to some other service like a taxi or something like that. So basically, you're fixing in part of the market allocation so it only goes to a certain clientele. So that has me concerned that the city council would be in collusion with this. So I would like that addressed.
Thank you.
And let me say that in each of these ordinances, we have been working with the transportation industry and the transportation providers throughout to make sure that these
Mr. Russell, I could add, the, uh, the ordinance that you'll consider later this evening, uh, is an amendment to the existing ordinance. The particular fee structures that, uh, that, that he's asking about here are have, are in the existing ordinance today. So, this is not a new structure and, and these are things that have been studied pretty heavily for years.
Thank you. Number eight is Huntsville Utility Items. Eight A is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute a purchase contract for the series two thousand fifteen water warrants. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Mr. Gertis, could you explain this, please?
Sure, uh, these warrants will be the primary funding mechanism for the construction of the southeast water treatment plant and associated improvements.
And what is the value of these warrants?
Uh, one hundred and five million dollars.
And what interest rate are they at? Sir, Ms. Phillips, you're gonna have to come up-
Ted Phillips, our CFO, will come to the mic.
Um, Ted Phillips, CFO for Huntsville Utilities. Pricing has not been set yet, uh, but we're asking for council's approval tonight is that, uh, once we get the pricing set and it's approved by our water, uh, board that we can bring it to the mayor to have him sign and then we'll also bring it to city council as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Phillips or Mr. Gertis? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have several board appointments to be voted on. Nine A, one is a resolution to reappoint Harlem McCallpine Franklin to the Alabama Constitution Village Historic Huntsville Depot Board for a term to begin June twenty-six, two thousand fifteen and expire June twenty-six, two thousand eighteen. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Two is a resolution to reappoint Dorothy Houston to the Huntsville Water Utility Board for a term to begin July first, two thousand fifteen and expire July first, two thousand eighteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Culver, second by Dr. Robinson, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Three is a resolution to reappoint Dorothy Houston to the Huntsville Natural Gas Utility Board for a term to begin July first, two thousand fifteen and expire July first, two thousand eighteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Culver, second by Dr. Robinson, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Four is a resolution to reappoint Thomas Winstead to the Huntsville Electric Utility Board for a term to begin July first, two thousand fifteen and expire July first, two thousand eighteen.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Dr. Robinson, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Five is a resolution to reappoint William H. Starnes to the Alabama Constitution Village Historic Huntsville Depot Board for a term to begin June twenty-six, two thousand fifteen and expire June twenty-six, two thousand eighteen. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Do we have any board appointment nominations tonight? We're now at ten A, approval expenditures. Ten A is a resolution authorized expenditure for payment. Does anyone have that time? Mr. Kling?
Uh, Mr. President, uh, absence of councilman showers, I move for payment vouchers amount of nine million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, forty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kling, second by Mr. Culver, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Kling, do you have a finance committee report?
Uh, I believe that Mr. Taylor has something to present at this time.
Councilmembers, mayor, I don't have a, a specific report. I will only echo what the mayor has already responded to from the public about our bond issue. We did have the special meeting, uh, on June the sixteenth, a week ago Tuesday, and so the council did approve, uh, that, uh, warrant issuance at the time. So, seventy million is what the city will receive on Tuesday and it will be spent, uh, as Mayor Battle described, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Taylor? We're now at communications from the mayor, Mayor Battle.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Um, this week is Armed Forces Week, uh, where our community honors those who have served in the Army, those who, those who do serve in the Army. And, uh, we want to tell each of them, thank you for your service, uh, to each of those people out there who are active serving or who are veterans, we just wanna say thank you for your service. This community, uh, takes a week and, um, and responds to, to what they have done for us and we try to, uh, try to say a, a big thank you. We started Monday night, uh, with a, um, concert, uh, that unfortunately got rained out at the very last minute, but we did have barbecue for each of the, uh, for the command staff out at Redstone Arsenal and we had they and their staff in for, um, for barbecue and then we were gonna listen to the Army Material Band and unfortunately a rainstorm popped up right at that time. Uh, we've had a signing of a proclamation that shows, um, uh, how we are in partnership with Redstone Arsenal and, uh, Madison County, the City of Madison and the City of Huntsville are all in partnership with Redstone Arsenal, working to make sure that the, um, that the arsenal is, is, is the best that it can be because the best that it can be makes us safer every day. And, uh, then finally, uh, there was a, um, there was a luncheon yesterday, um, uh, General Hayden, uh, who is a, a Grissom grad and, uh, and a local hometown person who is a four-star general with the Air Force, uh, spoke and did a great job and, um, and this, uh, Friday, we end up with, uh, the city, city, county, uh, local leaders playing, um, softball against, uh, Redstone Arsenal. And there's many old, old city, uh, city, county and otherwise leaders who will be playing against Redstone Arsenal and they're all in shape and they've been running a lot and do a lot of PT, so, um, in your prayers, you might wanna mention the city on that to make sure we don't take too bad a whipping, uh, on Friday night. Uh, for the record, I like to make the following appointments. Uh, Kim McQuinn to the Board of Examination Appeals for a partial term to expire September twenty-first, two thousand sixteen. John Olszewski to the Huntsville Police Citizens Advisory Board for a partial term to expire Ju- July eighth, two thousand sixteen. The reappointment of Kimberly Ford to the Huntsville Ice Skating Complex Border Control for a term to expire November twentieth, two thousand seventeen. The reappointment of Mike Finnegan to the Huntsville Ice Skating Complex Border Control for a term to expire November twentieth, two thousand seventeen. The reappointment of Dr. Kathy Brucel to the Alabama Constitution Village Historic Huntsville Depot Board for a three-year term to expire Ju- June twenty-six, two thousand eighteen. There's lots of activities that are happening right now. Uh, today, there's Green Street Market that is going on, uh, arts on the square and music on the square. Um, lots of things happening in the, in the, uh, city of Huntsville. I wish everybody a happy Fourth of July and more than that, we wish you to have a safe Fourth of July. Please practice safety as you're out there, having a great time and, um, and, uh, we'll see you right after the Fourth. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just a couple of things. One is we have with us, uh, Mr. President today, um, one of our council members from the city of Triana, uh, Mr. Lewis Ferrer, is that correct? Mr. Ferrer, is there anything you'd like to say if I could defer a minute of my time to him? Would you like to come up and say anything, sir?
How you doing? Um, um, the reason why I'm come by is to talk to Councilman, uh, Culver in, in regards to the problems we've been having with, um, delinquency in, in, uh, within, within his, uh, district, in, in my area, in Beatle and, and in, in the Savannah and Town Lake area. So, we, I'm trying to work with the city of Huntsville to see if we can, we can team together and, and help us, uh, with the patrol within those areas because, uh, in the past couple of months, we've been hit a lot with, uh, house and heartbreakings.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, councilman. And our districts border each other, uh, the west district that I represent, uh, Zert Road area, uh, and Mr. Hamilton and our chief of police, uh, Mr. Lewis, L.E.W.I.S., Morris. Thank you all for the work that you're doing and sharing that information with the communities on Zert Road, uh, Legacy Cove among other communities in Savannah, which we share. They're off of Beatle Lane as, as well. So, um, thank you for your help and I'll be sending that information to other, uh, residents in that community. And that's all I have. Uh, wishing everybody a happy and safe, uh, Fourth of July weekend and as, as all, as always, remember the purpose of the celebration for our, uh, uh, independents and soldiers who fight to keep us free and able to do all of those things as Americans that we are able to do, that people in other countries are not able to do. So, my thanks goes out to them and you all enjoy your Fourth of July. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Culver. Mr. Kling?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, this is gonna be an exciting, um, weekend, uh, in West Huntsville. Uh, the Merrimack Joe Bradley reunion is gonna be taking place this Saturday at, uh, the Fraternal Order of Eagles and, uh, a lot of history that has been, um, that lives on, even though the, uh, the school, Joe Bradley School's not there, the involvement in, of the Merrimack Neighborhood Association into, uh, keeping, keeping the dream alive, uh, is really something that, uh, um, it's just awesome to, uh, to participate in. And, uh, this year's gonna be especially, uh, nice because, uh, thanks to the great job that, uh, Steve Ivey and the Recreation Department had done, the, uh, Jim Merrick Park is gonna be scheduled for opening, uh, this Saturday. And, uh, Jim, we all remember, was the founding leader for the, uh, Merrimack Mill Village Association, uh, frequently, he was a great advocate, excuse me, he frequently came to council meetings and he was a great advocate for the neighborhood and for all of West Huntsville. And, uh, uh, this is really gonna be a great, uh, event that, um, we're all looking forward to, is the formal opening of the park and, uh, uh, we, uh, are very appreciative of the great work that, uh, Steve and the Recreation Department did to, to make things happen. Uh, two people I wanna mention who really made great contributions in addition to Jim are Al Farrar, who has, uh, been very much involved with, uh, scouting here in this community. Uh, Al had, uh, left, uh, in his resident in Atlanta and, uh, I was, uh, just kinda reminded about him a little bit, uh, by, uh, former school board member Topper Bernie and I got to think about all that he had done and what he had meant to this community. And, uh, uh, he is certainly a very, very fine person. Also, because of, uh, some, some health issues, uh, Tom McAdams, who's been a great, great leader, uh, for Fleming Westbury, uh, Neighborhood Association, is not gonna be quite as active, but we will still, uh, be seeing Tom. But, uh, uh, he is, uh, at a point where he is turning over the leadership of the association, uh, to someone else. Uh, he, um, has done many things, been a great neighborhood advocate, uh, and anytime that there was something that needed to be done, um, for example, council members may remember, we had the, uh, ceremonial resolutions that we presented, uh, on behalf of, uh, the work that was done at Whitesburg Elementary School. That was an idea that came because of Tom. Uh, the traffic circle, the, um, barricade, uh, upgrades that took place at the end of Jones Valley Drive, these are all things that Tom had done. And, uh, in case Tom is out there listening, uh, the, uh, folks tell me that, uh, the, uh, the great job that you have done is something that, uh, I've heard from many people in your neighborhood area. Thanks. Still looking forward to some great things that are, uh, we'll be doing with Tom in the future. And, uh, is Terry Hatfield by, here by chance?
Yes, he's in the back.
Okay. Terry, I just had a couple of streets, and this is not to stump you, but just wanna ask you a few, a couple of streets I've just noticed lately and just wanna see if you could take them down, take a look at them and see if they would qualify for resurfacing. Uh, Swanee, Stanford and Princeton, uh, all of those are located in the same neighborhood area, roughly, uh, Madison Heights, which is roughly across the street from First Baptist Church. In addition, uh, Queensberry Park, I think the first block off of Airport Road was done last year and I think the rest of the street might need to be looked into. And also Morgan, which, uh, is at the western part of, of Holiday Homes, that runs roughly, uh, from Bob Wallace, comes on out, uh, Patton. And just wanna ask you if you could look at those and see if those would qualify for resurfacing.
I will look, see what the rating is.
And, Mr. President, I just wanna wish everybody a great holiday and I think like Councilman Culver said, uh, this is certainly, uh, a community where I'm proud that we do think about what, uh, what it means on the Fourth of July and Memorial Day, uh, with the cut sacrifices that were made so that we could, uh, enjoy what we have today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Kling. Dr. Robinson?
I had the opportunity this week of going to Redstone Village at the invitation of Major General Grayson Tate, a longtime resident at Redstone Village. He invited me to come and speak to his men's club, but recognizing that I was a woman, they invited women to come for the first time and have the largest turnout that they've ever had. Maybe that'll be a lesson for them. I really enjoyed, um, meeting with the residents, talking about issues impacting South Huntsville and I look forward to returning again next month to, for General Turnmeier's ninetieth birthday. He was one of the founders of Redstone Village. Um, Armed Forces Week, as has been mentioned with this week, the, the signing of the proclamation was, was, was really hot, but it was, it was a great way to kick off the week. The luncheon with General Hayden was, uh, was really wonderful. His message about change was, was a great message. He attended Chaffey, Whitesburg and Grissom, uh, Grissom High School before leaving to go to Harvard because his mother said he couldn't get into Alabama or Auburn. Um, so, it, but it was, it was a great recognition of, of what, what Huntsville produces and the kind of leadership that we produce. And then last night was the Army Soldier Show at the VBC. Again, a great example of the young people in the Army. The, the theme was "We Serve" and it was about how those in the armed forces serve us, a great time, thing to, to remember a- as we approach the Fourth of July. But it was also about how we can serve in return. So, it was a great message to take away. Uh, this week was the Planning Commission, has been mentioned in discussion about West Lawn. I was impressed with the engagement of the public. The process works. It was a public hearing and the public came and they were heard. Their, uh, their desires to revitalize West Huntsville, to make sure that goods and services are available to the neighborhood that aren't currently there, will have both been addressed with, with the plan, with the grocery store that's going to go in and, and, uh, uh, rather than having a vacant school, a vibrant property and then a new school being built, a P eight being built in, at, at Morris, all of those will combine to create a really great neighborhood. The, the process did work, the neighbors were heard, it's gone back to, um, to the planning department, but I wanna underscore, uh, to, uh, the planning staff and, um, and others involved that there is urgency and we heard that urgency, um, with regard to the due diligence and the contracts that are involved. This is a really, really good project, but we've got to make sure that it go, it's, it's worked through on time. And finally, I also, um, want to comment on Mr. Good's remarks regarding his concern about rental properties. I share those concerns, but I'm wondering if we're going about it the wrong way. We're, we're focusing on a remedy. Maybe we need to focus on outcomes, what, and to come to an agreement on outcomes and then figure out what's the best way to get to those outcomes. Just change that conversation a little bit, I don't know if anybody would be open to that. But it, it, it's certainly an issue in my neck of the woods, a great concern. Uh, Mr. Lyle Voiles had, has made me very, very much aware of that and, uh, I'm wondering if we could just take a different look at it and a slightly different approach. And then finally, wishing everybody a very safe and happy Fourth of July.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Uh, we have voice count in the audience. Would you like to go to the microphone and introduce yourself? Do you mind? If you'll, uh, tell us your name and what badge you're working on, what troop you're with and what badge you're working on, we would appreciate it.
My name is Neil Hudson. I am with Troop Four out in Newmarket, Alabama. I am currently working towards my Eagle Scout and I am here for, under requirement for communications.
Okay. Welcome, Neil. We're glad to have you. If we can be of any help to you, Neil, uh, if you're gonna stay till the end of the meeting, we'll be glad to go over any issue you need to talk about and we'll be, uh, glad to give you any paperwork. And Ms. Reed and Pastor Johnson are right behind you if you have any questions, so we'll be glad to help as well. Councilmembers, uh, this past week, we've all been busy with armed services, but I've also had the pleasure of going to the, many of the Little League tournaments and we had the Coach Pitch Tournament at Fern Gully and the staff did a great job. Fields were wonderful. It's, we also had, uh, three different All-Star tournaments going on at Stoner Field and I'll compliment the mayor and his one Huntsville vision, uh, Stoner Field, as you know, is in North Huntsville near the Rock Quarry and the fields were as nice or probably nicer than any fields I've been on in the city of Huntsville in a long time. Uh, certainly much better than, uh, the ones that, uh, normally the people in my district play on and, and certainly better than Fern Gully. Um, so, I wanna compliment, uh, the people that keep up Stoner Field. It was a great experience, the kids enjoyed it, we had a great time out there playing and, uh, just want you to know that the facilities are equal all over the city or as good as, And just want you to know that the facilities are equal all over the city, or as good as is any area, and so we need to make sure we recognize that. This week we'll be at Belmont Way down south in Dr. Robinson's district, and the 11 and 12 Major League tournament will be starting Monday night. So if you're wanting to see some good Little League baseball come out to Belmont, it'll probably be Monday about 5:30 will be the opening ceremonies. We're now at 13 unfinished business items for action. 13A is ordinance number 15-413 annexing land lying on the north side of Capshaw Road and on the east side of Autumn Branch Drive. This was introduced June 11th, 2015 Regular Council Meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Culver, second by Dr. Robinson. Ms. Nichols, can you explain this, please?
This property is approximately 0.42 acres. It's located on the north side of Capshaw Road and on the east side of Autumn Branch Drive. This is the Autumn Branch subdivision. When this subdivision was initially constructed, the first few homes in this area were constructed in the county. During the second phase, the developer decided that they wanted to annex the remainder of the property into the city, leaving out the initial homes. One of the initial homes would now like to petition to be in the city, they would like access to city services, which would include city sewer as their main city service, as well as police and fire protection. And the structure is currently a single-family detached home.
Thank you. Discussion, questions, councilmembers?
Yes.
Mr. Culver.
And that's just one particular area, one home there?
Yes, the one that's highlighted in the purple is the only home that's interested in coming in. The other homes that are not outlined will still remain in the county, but they do have the option of annexing in, in the future.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. B is ordinance number 15-414, amending Chapter Eight, Article Four, Vehicles For Hire of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Huntsville. This was introduced June 11th, 2015, at the Regular Council Meeting. The chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson. Mr. Brown, could you explain this? And then we've had a couple of citizens speak on it, if you were here to address their concerns, otherwise we'll get them back up to make sure their questions are answered. Please go ahead.
I'll be happy to. We've been working for the past several weeks, several city departments to, to sort of streamline and clarify some of the items in the Vehicle For Hire ordinance. This involves all of the providers that are, that are allowed for under that ordinance. We've done this in collaboration with some of the taxi cab company managers, we've looked at considerable number of ordinances from other jurisdictions that we felt like were good and applicable and have, have used some of those things to, to help make our ordinance better. I'll go over the highlights of the changes, and I can do it in as much or as little detail as you want, but I'll, I'll just hit the highlights and be happy to, to drill down into any of it that you'd like for me to, to do that with. First off, we're changing some of the requirements for the chauffeur's license that's required for, for taxi limousines and some of those type services. Those things, basically we're eliminating unnecessary requirements there. That ordinance, or that part of the ordinance has been in place for many years, there's three or four things in that ordinance that, that we were collecting that we weren't actually using for any legitimate purpose. So we've eliminated that, streamlined that, and made that easier for the taxi cab limousine company guys to get their, to get their chauffeur's licenses. We've made some additional changes in the portion of the ordinance that regulates transportation network vehicles, transportation network companies, and this is not done, there are several companies, Uber, Lyft, Sidecar, four or five others that are included under that category. This is not done in response to any particular company. We wanted to make an ordinance that would, that would welcome any of those companies that wanted to operate in Huntsville, so it's not designed for any particular company. I just want to make that, you know, observation for the public so that everyone understands that. First thing that we've done is we've streamlined the licensing process in conjunction with Mr. Haygood's staff. It will require a transportation network company to, to buy an annual $5,000 license as opposed to a license for every single vehicle that they would, that they would license. So that, that makes it a little simpler, a little cleaner, a little easier. This ordinance clarifies insurance requirements. There are two different categories of insurances that transportation network vehicles generally have, one that's in effect when the driver is waiting for a fare, another that goes into effect with much higher limits when the driver actually has a fare. So we clarified the ordinance to, to recognize those two things and to require those two things. This ordinance will require a driver's card for a TNC operator, not specifically a chauffeur's license, but it would be a driver's card that'll be issued by the Chief of Police or someone in his department, and those drivers will be required to have that card available when they're providing service to the public. Background checks will be done by the transportation network companies according to requirements that we set forth in this ordinance. They are fairly strict requirements, and obviously designed to protect the public when they're in the vehicles with these drivers. Those checks, while they're done by the company, would be sent to our police department. Our police department would have the ability to, to review those and have input into it, and so that eliminates a duplicative, duplicative check, one that we do, one that they do. So we'll accept theirs, police chief will review that, approve it, and then they'll be entered into our system. Vehicle inspections will be required, they'll be done by a certified mechanic. We won't do the inspections ourselves, we will outline the standards by which they'll have to operate. Those inspection sheets will have to be present in the car, so if the police stop the car, check the car, they'll have those inspection sheets and they can, they can review those and look at them, make sure they're up to date and in conformance with the ordinance. Trade dress will be required, will require the vehicle to have prominent marking. Generally, there's a, Lyft has a mustache I think they use on their car, Uber has a U, I'm not sure what Sidecar does, but they all have a trade dress. Will require that trade dress to be displayed on the vehicle when it's in service. One of the things that one of the gentlemen mentioned earlier is the, is the access to the app by law enforcement officials. Because these cars, a taxi cab is a certain color, has a meter, has a name on it, permit number, easily distinguishable. TNC vehicles will be personal cars, all sorts of different sorts, sorts of cars will be eligible to be used. So one of the ways, one of the methods for enforcement will be to use that app for a police officer to call a car. So this ordinance will restrict the TNC from being able to either tell the driver that this is a police officer that's on the app, or to disable the app of a known law enforcement officer. So that just gives us a, a better and easier way to do routine on-street inspections. We also do on, on-street routine inspections for taxi cabs. That's done probably daily, so, and the police officers are generally very, they recognize if there's a fare in the vehicle that it's, you know, they, they wait till they drop their fare off, that kind of thing. So they, they're, they recognize that, that there's public service going on and try not to interfere with that. So I think they'll be fair in that. That's the highlights of it. Just would say this in closing, that the, the business model for transportation network vehicle companies and taxi cab companies is changing, technology's changing all this. It's happening at a, at a pretty rapid, rapid pace. I would say this ordinance as we're presenting it is a, is a good framework. I would not say that we won't be back to tweak it because we probably will, but we feel like this is a good framework to, to move forward with.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have questions? Ms. Kling.
Over the last couple of weeks, we've had some very thought-provoking phone calls, emails, you know, pertaining to this, and a lot of those I forwarded over to you. Is there anything that has come in, I guess since the last council meeting, or you heard at tonight's meeting, that would, you feel needs to be incorporated, amended to what's on the table, or do you think this is about as good as you can get it right now?
Well, what we've done and working in conjunction with the police department is have tried to put public safety as, as, as the number one criteria, and we feel like this ordinance does that. Can we protect against every single potential event? No, but this is a, I think, a good framework, and it, and it's a fairly typical framework that people are using. So I feel comfortable that, that this is, this is good and will protect the public.
What about the, the competition issues or price issues?
The gentleman's question about the, the minimum, the minimum charge on special shuttles, black cars, limousines, is, that was put in place, and certainly the council has the authority to do that as council regulates the use of the public streets. That was put in place, not arbitrarily, it was put in place, one, because it's a fairly standard rate that these higher-level vehicles charge. We're talking about luxury-type vehicles that are much more expensive than a typical cab or a typical personal car. That's in line with what they charge in other cities. And our, one of our primary concerns was that someone would come in under this category and then act as a taxi cab would act, and charge a, you know, give us $10 and we'll take you to the grocery store, kind of a situation. And we wanted to prevent that from happening. This is a higher-level service that will be used by, primarily by executives, hotels, boutels, restaurants, venues that are bringing in, you know, people to perform and that kind of thing. So it's, it's a higher-level service, higher-level price, and we didn't want it competing at the, at the level of taxi cabs and TNCs.
So we could go ahead and pass this tonight, and then if tweaking needed to be done two months from now, or situations came up that we felt like need to be addressed, there's nothing that would prohibit, you know, you from coming back to the council with amendments or modifications?
No, sir, it would not. I, I expect that that'll happen. What we've done is we, we've said here that Huntsville's open, open for business with TNCs as well as these other providers that we've allowed for. Some may come in and say we need some adjustments, we'll look at that, and if it's in the public's best interest, we'll come back to the council and recommend it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Joffrehan, one of our citizens, Mr. Thomas, mentioned price fixing, I believe, in collusion. Could you advise the council on that and anything else about this particular ordinance?
Yes, and I think, and I think there may be some confusion between the actions of a regulatory body and what occurs in the private sector. Municipalities, for the most part, are exempt from the antitrust laws. It's not, it's not uncommon, in fact, it's standard practice actually for municipalities to establish a base rate for luxury vehicles or limousines. The rate established for Huntsville, as I understand it, is actually somewhat lower than it is in some surrounding cities. Nashville, correct me if I'm wrong, I think Nashville's base rate is at $55 per hour for its luxury service. So it is appropriate, it is, it is okay and appropriate for municipalities to establish a base rate. It would not be appropriate for all the other private companies to get together and determine what that rate would be. But since it is established by the governing body, applicable to everyone across the board in that same classification, it's, it's appropriate.
Thank you. Dr. Robinson?
Can you just clarify for me what the responsibility of the network companies is and what the responsibility of the drivers is? As I, looking at it here, the network companies are responsible for the license, business license, for the background check of their drivers?
Correct.
The inspections of the vehicles?
Correct.
And the insurance?
Yeah, the, the insurance is, you're correct on the first three. The insurance is, is a bit of a tiered thing where the, when the driver is not actually carrying a passenger, the TNCs generally speaking, and this may not apply to every single one of them, but, but I think it does. Generally, they, they want the driver's personal insurance to be first, and then they have insurance that ensures it secondary if the driver's insurance does not pay. And that's at, I think, a 50, 125 limit. And that's when someone's not in the vehicle, they're just signed on to, to take a passenger. Once a passenger gets in the vehicle, this ordinance would require a million-dollar liability on the part of the TNC, and they will have to provide that, they'll have to provide that certificate to a city clerk's office when they come in to apply for their license and their certificate from the council.
And the driver's responsibility is simply to have a valid driver's license?
The driver is required to have an appropriate record, appropriate driving record. The driver will be required, under, under this current ordinance, would have, to have a driver's card, he would have to have that vehicle inspection sheet available in the vehicle with him. They provide the fuel, they provide the, you know, the maintenance on the car and that sort of thing.
Cost of business.
So all that's their responsibility. The TNCs generally take a percentage of the fare for enabling the app and, and providing that app, and then the driver takes the rest.
It's an interesting business model. Now, I know that because it is sort of an evolving model, you've been having lots of conversations with the companies. I know, Mr. Kling, we've, we've had lots of communications from the public about their desire to see this happen, but you've been having conversations with the companies themselves. And we're working toward an ordinance that they, that will enable them to do business here?
What we feel like is this is a good framework, it, it may not be the be-all, end-all, and we're, we're open for discussion and open for coming back to the council if there are tweaks that need to be made. This is simply an additional transportation service that would be available to the public, just like the other services we have. It's, it's just something that would be an additional choice they'd have.
Further discussion?
If I could add, there's two areas, as we've had conversations with, with TNCs, where we see things evolving very rapidly that, that could almost force us to come back and tweak. And two areas in particular, one is the insurance. Insurance companies are developing models to react to this, and, and there's other places where, where you see some pretty tough cases and, that they're having to figure out how to split the, the liability when it transitions from a private vehicle to in-service, things like that. And so we've had some very good conversations about how those companies are seeing their supporting insurance companies react and build appropriate models for that. So as we go forward, I definitely would anticipate us needing to tweak language here to match the way the insurance industry is dealing with these companies. Secondly is, we've had some very good conversations about their technologies and how those technologies will enable us to better administer this program, where, where most of, you know, every other category vehicle for hire is typically a small, local company that's going to do most of their business, you know, in-person, through paper. These TNCs are typically large national firms that will do a lot of stuff, you know, electronically. And a lot of their technologies and the way in which they manage their driver fleet will also enable the police and/or others to help manage their roles in administering the program. And so I would anticipate us needing to tweak some of those things to allow that process to work more, more seamlessly for them. So, you know, it's unusual for us to bring you back the same ordinance to amend, you know, on, on rapid turns like this, but I think it's really us trying to keep up with the pace of the technology and the business model.
And it's a start, and I know we've all heard from people who want to see this happen, so.
Further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. C is, goes with us, is ordinance number 15-415, amending Section 15-8580 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Huntsville. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson. Ms. Hamilton, can you explain this, or Ms. Joffrehan? Ms. Haygood, whichever one wants.
I can do, I can, this is an amendment to the Code of Ordinances in Section 15-85, dealing with taxi cabs and other vehicles for hire, and it's setting an annual license tax for transportation network companies of $5,000, and for every other type of vehicle for hire, it would be $125 for each vehicle so operated. Vehicles for hire will have to comply with Chapter Eight, Article Four, before any license can be issued, and that, that covers it.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Is there any limit to the number of cars that could operate under that $5,000, one, one-time fee, many cars as you want?
Correct, and, and their model really kind of requires that, where, so for the other types of vehicles for hire, there, there's some limitations on the number of vehicles they can have in their fleet, there's some control over that so that the market doesn't get flooded, but for TNCs, there is no cap.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. D is ordinance number 15-416, amending Section 22 point, dash one and Section 22 dash 39 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Huntsville. Move for approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. Mr. Kling?
Mr. President, this is a discussion that we'd have the last couple of meetings, it was introduced at the last meeting. This pertains to the unsolicited advertising newspapers that are thrown into people's yards after people have contacted the company to ask that they not receive such papers. Mr. Joffrehan came up with something that he assures me meets the first Uh, Mr. Joffreyon came up with something that he assures me meets the First Amendment guidelines, and Mr. Joffreyon came up with it, you know, it's got to be good quality work. And, um, I'm smiling, Mr. Joffreyon. But anyway, among the things, it would allow a person to post a, uh, no, uh, no, uh, no distribution of, uh, newspapers, uh, dumping of newspapers in their yard, or it also gives them the option of contacting the company by, uh, registered mail to opt out on, on an annual basis. Uh, Mr. Joffreyon, uh, said that this comes under the, uh, existing ordinances that we have, which provides for fines for, um, uh, violations of this by a company after a person by certified mail has documentation that they had attempted to opt out. And I guess I had, I could, if I could ask one question, I don't know if we need to make any change, but similar to, uh, the, uh, soliciting ordinance that we had, the door-to-door soliciting ordinance, um, certain, um, certain functions such as neighborhood associations, uh, leaving, uh, handbills on front doorsteps were allowed when we came up with that ordinance. Uh, Mr. Joffreyon, are we doing anything here that would prohibit or hurt neighborhood associations, which are nonprofit and, you know, civic versus a for-profit advertising entity?
No, sir, but if an owner doesn't want, uh, to receive information from the neighborhood association, he or she can still post the property or provide a written notice to the association.
Okay.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at 14 new business items for an introduction. 14A is the introduction of an ordinance annexing land lying south of US Highway 72 West and on the east side of Slaughter Road. B is introduction of an ordinance annexing land lying north of Interstate 565 and on the north side of Governor's West. C is introduction of an ordinance annexing land lying south of Sutton Road and on the east side of Woodside Drive. Those have been properly introduced. We're now at 15 new business items for consideration or action. Council members, if you notify the chair of any items you'd like to hold for discussion. Mr. Culver?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to hold 15A, I, and L.
We have 15A, I, and L. Are there any others? The chair holds 15T and 15V. Are there any others? 15B is an ordinance to amend budget ordinance number 14 dash 665 by changing authorized personnel strength in various departments and funds. C is an ordinance to amend budget ordinance number 14 dash 665 by changing appropriated funding for various departments and funds. D is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement with the low bidder meeting specifications outlined in the attached summary of bids for acceptance. E is a resolution authorizing mayor to a paging pricing agreement between the City of Huntsville and Sharp Communications, Inc. F is a request for authorization to advertise and fill vacated sanitation worker positions. G is a request for authorization to advertise and fill two planning GNSS assistant positions. H is a resolution authorizing city attorney to settle the claim of Curtis Ballard. J is a resolution authorizing city attorney to settle the claim of Patricia Vale. K is a resolution authorizing condemnation proceedings to obtain rights away utility and drainage easements and construction easements along Winchester Road for the Winchester Road widening project. M is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute agreement between the City of Huntsville and William M. Bone and Associates for Architectural Services for the Dr. Richard Chower Center Splash Pad and Interior Renovations located at 4600 Blue, Blue Springs Road. N is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter agreement between the City of Huntsville and Fuqua and Partners Associates for Architectural Services for the Administration Building Canopy and Minor Renovations. O is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter agreement between the City of Huntsville and low bidder LTS Construction LLC for periodic bid for emergency pipe bursting 2015, project number 6515 SP44. P is ordinance declaring certain water pollution control equipment to be deemed surplus property and sold at auction. Q is a resolution to apply for a Federal Transit Administration 49 USC Section 5307 grant. R is a resolution to apply for a Federal Transit Administration 49 USC Section 5339 grant. S is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute modification number two to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Family Services Center, Inc. for services to the homeless population. U is a request for authorization to advertise and fill one regular full-time position of animal services shelter attendant grade eight. Chair moves consolidation approval of 15B through H, 15J and K, 15M through S, and 15U.
Second.
Of a motion consolidated approved by the chair or second by Dr. Robinson? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. 15A is a resolution by the City Council of the City of Huntsville ratifying and approving the application for the fiscal year 2015 Body Warm Camera Pilot Implementation Program Grant.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kling, second by Ms. Culver. Discussion?
How did we arrive at the 1.2, $2 million figure?
Uh, the, uh, the federal grant application provided, uh, a great deal of guidance on a model for managing the program, uh, as well as estimates that, uh, that they've established based on lessons learned from programs, you know, across the country. Uh, so, uh, they gave a planning factor of $3,000 per camera. Now, that's not $3,000 for the camera itself, that's, it's intended to be the entire system. So obviously, there's a great deal of stores, communications gear that goes that backs up the camera itself, uh, but as a, as a good planning factor for estimating the total cost, uh, they use 3,000 per camera. Uh, in our case, uh, we, uh, need 417 cameras to outfit, uh, all of our sworn officers below the captain level. So lieutenants and below as well as investigators and other, uh, that may serve in some of those special positions is where we come up with the 417 number, uh, which gets you to 1.25 million. Now, the federal grant, the maximum that we can get based on the size of our, of our department in our city is 600,000. Uh, so, uh, we would then be obligated to match, uh, that 600 plus any additional above, above the 1.2 million number. So, uh, the, the city's match would be approximately 650,000 where we to receive the grant. Uh, so in effect, by your ratification of our submitting of the grant, you are in effect committing to, to meeting our obligation as it relates to the grant. I will tell you, um, you know, we don't know exactly what the likelihood is of us receiving the grant. You know, we don't know. We don't know how many other cities will apply. You don't know, uh, you know, how, how our pack necessarily will compete. We think we're competitive. Uh, we certainly recognize the need, uh, but a lot of other cities need it as well. So we'll have to see how, uh, how they deal with that. Um, but, uh, that, that planning, that formula that the, the federal government provided is, was the basis for, for that number.
And if we don't get the grant, then what?
Uh, we are proceeding with, uh, developing the program and, and moving forward, uh, you know, regardless. Uh, obviously, that, there'll be an additional $600,000 that we'll have to find in the budget, uh, but, but the mayor has expressed, uh, his intent, his guidance to, uh, to myself and to the police department and the other departments that are part of this program is to, to move on, you know, develop the program and, and pursue the acquisition of the system regardless of whether or not we get the grant. The grant will help fund it, but I don't think it in any way changes, uh, the speed with which we, uh, develop the program or, or intent. Uh, so, uh, certainly from a budgeting aspect, we will, uh, you know, we'll need to go ahead and assume that we don't get it for the purposes of planning, kind of assume worst-case scenario from a budgeting standpoint. So as we're developing the budget this summer going into FY16, uh, we'll need to include those funds, uh, in order to, to move out on the program with or without the federal dollars.
So we've made a $600,000 commitment regardless here?
Uh, really 650.
650,000.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I might say, we're, we're still working every aspect of this as, uh, most of the grant application follows federal guidelines. We've, we've, um, talked about how we can, uh, speed up that federal process and actually get ahead of the, uh, process that, that is, um, outlined in, in the, uh, federal proposal. Um, but for, because of the speed that we had to have the, um, grant in, we followed all the federal guidelines through it, and they have a federal guidelines that says how long it should take to do this, 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 and this. We're, uh, we're very hopeful that we can move faster than that, uh, and possibly have a system in place, uh, quicker than, uh, what was, uh, what was originally put forward, uh, in the federal grant.
Further discussion?
Do we, uh, know when we'll hear one way or another concerning the grant application being accepted or not?
Mr. Kling, I, I do not have the date, no. Uh, but, uh, we, we can see what that is. The, the deadline for submittal for everybody was the 16th of June, and so now it's going into, you know, their review process, uh, but I, I don't have the specific date here on my notes.
And as we said, we're going to move forward regardless, so, uh, we will, we will be budgeting this full amount in, into the budget with, uh, uh, you know, with the latitude if we do have the grant come through, that we'll have some extra latitude, uh, in the budget.
And mayor, that was my question. When you say the full amount, are we referring to the 1.2 million dollars?
Yes, the 1.2 million. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Is the, is the grant application an all or nothing, or could they take the, um, I think I heard at one point it was 25 million, but could they take it and just prorate it among all the applying, uh, communities, or is it going to be all or nothing?
Uh, our understanding is that, that they, they could give us less than what we asked for. So based on the number of cameras that, uh, that we've programmed in our request, uh, we would be eligible for up to 600,000, but our understanding is that they could give us an amount less than that, and then any, any remaining requirement we would have, we would be obligated to fund that.
Is the council ready to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. 15A is a resolution authorizing city attorney to settle the claim of Josekia Richardson. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Culver, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Mr. President. Withstanding what we can say about this particular settlement publicly, um, I've had some inquiries, uh, from constituents about the settlement of this case, just whatever it is, Mr. Joffreyon, that we can publicly discuss.
Well, we can talk about the amount and the name. Uh, I mean, uh, this involves some injuries to, uh, to a, a minor child, uh, and this is to compensate for, uh, the damages. It, uh, it involved a broken off, uh, signpost that, um, was not, uh, visible to the child and has since been removed, but appeared to have been there for such a long period of time that we were on constructive notice of, of it being there, so.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. L is a request for authorization to fill vacant police officer positions. The chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion? Ms. Culver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'm, I have a question, I guess, for the chief as it relates to the urgency of it. Um, and how many positions are we looking at perhaps?
Well, I can't tell you exactly, uh, because our academy will start, uh, hopefully in March of 2016, uh, and the process is a, is a link, is a long process. You've been through it as a police officer. Uh, we have about 13 vacancies right now. I anticipate we'll have more, and we'll fill every, every vacancy that we have at the time, uh, that we start the academy.
And, uh, chief, are we gonna do, um, more, are we gonna accept more candidates than we have vacancies for, assuming that some of them may wash out? And if they don't wash out, I, I know the mayor will find monies in the budget to, to keep those officers. And the reason I say that is because when you lose a position, if you're approved for 20, and you put 20 in the academy, and somewhere during that long, arduous process, you lose two or three officers. That's just time and money lost, uh, in the meantime.
And I might answer that. You know, we are going to go to the max that we can go with this number. Uh, you know, if you remember, we added six officers last year. We may be adding another six officers this year. Um, just depends on budget. As, as we look at the budget, we will be trying to add some, uh, Mr. Hamilton has been working, uh, along with the chief, try, trying to make sure that our hiring process is a little bit better also, so that we can actually, when we make the hire, we can actually pull some of the officers in, some of the young cadets in and actually, uh, get them in. Uh, Ms. Hamilton, you want to explain a little bit about that process?
So a couple of things. One, uh, mayor, you're correct. You know, last year, uh, there was an addition of officers and our recruiting efforts for last year's class did not fully fill those additional slots. So there, there is a shortfall there in addition to the existing vacancies that, uh, the growth that, that council, uh, approved was not fully realized, uh, just because of, uh, some of the washout that you talk about, uh, and, uh, and just not getting sufficient numbers, uh, into the academy. Um, you know, with the mayor's alluding to in the, in the recruiting process, we're seeing a number of, uh, of great candidates that, uh, as you would expect, apply to a number of departments. Uh, as we've continued to, to look at our recruiting efforts, the, the hiring process has not always been as nimble as we would like it to be. In some cases, those great candidates are taking jobs with other departments, uh, when, uh, when we would like to have had them. You know, the, the number one candidate is, is, as chief, uh, took the results of all of the testing and the hiring process, the candidate he assessed as our number one candidate took a job with another police department as an example. So there's some really high-quality folks out there, uh, that we would love to have in our department, and in some cases, our process has taken longer than it should. So there's some things we're doing to streamline that, uh, also make sure that good candidates aren't being eliminated unnecessarily early in the process, keep them in the hiring process longer. But also, as, as the mayor alluded to, looking at, uh, at appropriate point during the hiring process to bring them on as cadets, allow them to, to serve at appropriate levels within department in preparation for the academy, uh, sitting. Uh, you know, we see people that sometimes just because of the months that it has taken us to get the academy started, they, you know, they got to support their family, and so they end up taking another job. And so, uh, we think there's, we can get a lot of great benefit out, out of having them do tasks that don't necessarily require a sworn officer. You know, they would not, the cadets would not be carrying guns, would not be serving as sworn officers, but there's certainly things that they can do in a number of areas in the department to add benefit, and then also let them, uh, dedicate time to prepare for the academy and then have a much better graduation rate. So there's a number of things like that in the, in the recruiting, the hiring process, and then also the retention process through the academy, uh, where we think we can make a real difference, uh, in, in that process. So we're working those things as we speak. Uh, some of those, some of those programs may require additional council action, others are more policy-level issues that we can address just inside the administration. So, uh, we'll work through that. HR is, uh, dedicating a lot of time to identifying the right way to do, uh, to do that process. But, uh, the mayor's correct, we will need to bring on more, uh, cadets than what we have current vacancies for in order to, uh, realize the growth that we've all identified as necessary.
And, and I will say this, um, I want to thank the chief for going through and breaking down the whole hiring process and breaking it down to where it can be the most effective that it possibly can, because I think in the past, um, we, our, our hiring process has had some stopgaps in it that for somebody who really has to have a paycheck every month, every week or every, uh, every month to, uh, pay his bills, he, he hasn't had that opportunity to wait until we could actually start a school and start a hiring. And so he's, uh, moving through some processes so that we can actually bring those, um, young, young people on and, and have some of the best quality candidates that there are out there for our police force.
Also, if I could, it, it's not contained in the action that you're considering tonight, but, but something that we expect to bring to Mew in a, in a future meeting is, uh, some changes to the programs that allow us to go out and do laterals. So we know that there's police officers in other departments that may be interested in, in moving to Huntsville, uh, and there's some things that we do to incentivize that, but there's more that we could do to incentivize and actually bring experienced police officers from other parts of the state who might be interested in moving here. So, uh, right now, HR is looking at how we, how we would be able to do that, and, and some of that may require some council action, but we'll bring that to you, uh, and, and really related to the same process.
And just, and thank you so kindly for that, and chief, we certainly appreciate your creativity in that, um, regard. Um, how are we doing in terms of minority recruiting? That has always been a concern even back when I was a police officer in terms of trying to find, uh, candidates who will stay with us. Uh, how are we doing in that arena?
That's, that is a concern of ours for every class that we've had, and we have worked hard on every class, and, uh, chief has, has got some programs where they're working. I think one of the things that will really help that is being able to hire those people quicker, uh, and get them on the, on the payroll quicker. If we find, uh, qualified candidates ready to go, we can go ahead and get them on the payroll and get them, uh, paid, because that's, that's where we're losing many of them. Chief, you might want to address some of that, too.
Uh, that's, that's correct, mayor. It's, it's very competitive hiring, and it's especially very competitive when you are focusing on minority hiring. And it's important that you're able to offer a job. People can't, they're, they can't wait for a job. Now, there are a lot of good police officers that are already police officers in the state that would love to come to Huntsville to be a part of the Huntsville Police Department. And, and we're working on some incentives to do that, to make that happen. But the length of the process, it was a little, it was somewhat cumbersome, and there were some lag times in some periods. And, and, and we had a policy that we didn't hire until the first day of the academy. And that, that means that if we're asking you to apply for a job now, then we're not going to offer you a job or you won't start to work until March. So, so we, we've worked on that, and we're going to make it more attractive to, to go through the process. And we've changed some things in the process that I believe will, will help us. It's, it's, it was an old process, and I think we'll, we'll do, do well this time.
Great. Thank you, chief.
Mr. Hamilton, in the example of losing the number one candidate, did we lose the number one candidate because of the length of time we take to hire? Or is it based on the starting salary, or were there other competitive advantages that, that we don't provide?
You know, we didn't have the opportunity to, to interview her specifically, but just understanding where, where she went instead is probably some of all of that. I think that, you know, it was a smaller department that, that probably had a, you know, more compressed timeline, easier for them to, to deal with. They do have a slightly higher salary structure, not significantly, but, but somewhat. There, there may have been other factors as well. But, you know, we were convinced, and, and we've actually, HR has actually commissioned a number of surveys where they actually gone back out to folks that had submitted applications, but then for some reason did not complete the hiring process. We have, in, in prior years, we had an inordinate number of people that have submitted an application, then failed to show up for some of the testing and, and never actually take those first critical steps to, to really get into the process. So they've gone back and, you know, you know, why did you not show up? Why did you come take the PT test, then not show up for the written exam, or things like that? And I've gotten some pretty good data, which has really helped drive some of the changes that we're, we're trying to implement now, to, to get them to take that first step and not be intimidated by it. Probably some of it is just people intimidated by some of those initial tests. And so we're trying to do some things to kind of break down those barriers and understand that, that it's worth coming in and giving it a shot. Because we think there's a lot of probably folks that would have been good candidates, but, you know, didn't really get into the process. And, and that's, that's not, that's both in minority and majority candidates, you know, across, across the entire population. But in, you know, that, that one kind of anecdote that I've given of that one number one candidate, I think it's probably a variety of things in her case.
And the, I remember when you gave us a lot of information at a work session on the subject, it was very interesting. We normally have so many candidates for such a small class. I remember there were something like 1,200 applications for a class of 20 something. And so you're trying to fix that to make those more qualified. Does the city of Huntsville, do we have more tests than other departments? Or, you know, if you're saying that they come to the PT, then don't want to continue on? Does every other department have a PT test and then a written test?
Well, chief can talk to a lot more detail, but essentially we meet the state standards. But I'd like chief to talk in detail about what the requirements are.
There, there are state standards. There, there are state standards that you have to pass the PT test. It's a question of where do you, where do you give that in the process? You can, the PT test is one of the things that's in the process that you can work with somebody on in order to help them pass that test. And if you give it in the very beginning, you don't have an opportunity to work with. We're actually looking at changing the testing. There's a state, state approved test that's a different test than the test that we're given. We noticed that, that our tests that we've been giving, they change the test and, and our failure rate, pass fail rate on that test is not where we want it to be. So there, there's some other standardized testing that are approved by the state. But you, the, the qualifications or the things that you have to do in the process are, are the same. They're, they're consistent through the state, because you have to be certified by the Alabama Peace Officer Standard and Training Commission.
Okay.
And, and along those lines, chief, are our standards, I know we meet the minimum state standards, but are our standards still above what the state requires?
Uh, yes, sir. The state just upped their minimum standard from 480 to 520 hours, and we're above that. In fact, was recently appointed by the governor to be a commissioner on the Alabama Peace Officer Standard and Training Commission. So I'm able to make some inroads into that, and that's been beneficial in helping, helping us in, in Huntsville.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you.
Further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? It carries. T is a resolution authorizing mayor into lease agreement between the city of Huntsville and Green Gate School. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, a second by Mr. Culver. Mr. Hamilton, can you explain this, please?
So I think, you know, most people in our community are probably somewhat familiar with Green Gate School. It is a, it's a private school whose mission is specifically to educate children that are suffering from dyslexia. So it's kindergarten through eighth grade, and they, they have the programs in place and the intensive training programs and academic programs necessary to prepare those children to then leave and, and go into high school with typical populations, whether it's other private schools or public schools. So they are, they are a nonprofit organization, and they, where they're currently located is, is no longer meeting their needs. They were searching for another location. When we went into discussions with the school system about potentially taking on Calvary Hill School, we had a strong desire to, to not let that school go vacant and, and be boarded up and be an attractor to the neighborhood. And as we had talked, when we discussed the, that purchase agreement, at the beginning, we didn't have a use for it, but we knew that we needed to find something that, that was valuable and beneficial to the community to, to continue to use that school. That, that's physically in great shape. So Green Gate School then, then came up as one of those potential users. Now they, this lease agreement is only for a portion of the school. It's about 31,000 square feet is what their lease is. The whole school is about 100,000. And so it, it would be approximately a third of, of the building. This lease agreement, their, their lease payments would be in the amount of $75,000 per year. As, as we've looked at the way in which we'll reutilize that school, one of the benefits of having an organization like this that has a revenue stream where it's appropriate for them to contribute lease payments is that that can go directly into maintaining, maintaining and sustaining that, that school. And so it's not a complete burden on, on our budget. We do anticipate bringing you more lease agreements in the future for that facility, for other nonprofits. Really what, what I anticipate you'll see there in that building is a collection of organizations that are really focused on enrichment and education academic programs, predominantly for youth. There are some that, that may be for, for folks outside of what you would define as youth, but predominantly it'll be youth programs that, that assist in enriching and, and adding to academic success. So there's a, there's a couple that have a lot of very good after-school programs and have had historic partnerships with the, the schools in that area. And so we anticipate that really being kind of be a collection of organizations like that. There's others that kind of fall outside of that. There's some historical organizations that want to do some things. But, but I also would anticipate them being able to contribute to the historical education and, and enrichment of the community. And we've also received interest from the library of doing, they kind of have a model for small library, almost like reading room kind of facilities that they'll co-locate in some of the disadvantaged areas. And so I would anticipate that the library would have a, you know, a small branch in, in that facility that will support those organizations that are doing that, that youth enrichment and, and academic enhancement.
Mr. President, I, I will mention that Green Gate School is part of our quality of life. It is the only dyslexic school that we, that is found south of Nashville, west of Atlanta, and, you know, as far down as Birmingham in, in the whole area. And the dyslexic students are taken and they're done. They have, you know, one-on-one tutoring, two-on-one tutoring. And they're taught to conquer dyslexia. They're taught to mainstream back in. A lot of their students go one, two, three years at Green Gate, and it is an expensive school, but is a nonprofit school. But they go one, two, three years at, at Green Gate, and then they mainstream back into the public school system. And that, that's what we need. As we had many of our people moving here with Brack from Fairfax County, Virginia, where Mr. Hamilton came from and others came from. The, this was, this was one of the quality of life issues that they would ask about with special needs children. And, and this helped those children get back and mainstream back into our, our policy, our, our school system. So I think it's just as much a part of the education system as, as our public school system. And it does address a direct need out there in this, in, in the community.
Yeah, and I, and I certainly am familiar with Green Gate School and appreciate their work and do believe it enhances our community. They were my neighbor for many years on my street, at Home Street Methodist Church, and do a wonderful job. I'm going to vote for it because I, I do agree it's a special school and it's Green Gate, but I'm very, I'm very concerned, but concerned about the, the philosophy of the city buying this school and leasing it to a nonprofit or, or, or school. And so I'm going to go along with it, based on just Green Gate being a special occurrence. But I, if it was some other than Green Gate, I'm not sure I could support it. So I just want to make that clear that I'm not trying to talk out of both sides of my mouth, but I'm willing to kind of go against a little philosophy for Green Gate on this one.
And, and I understand completely. We, we do not go out and try to compete with the private market out there. We try not to compete with the private market. This was a case where a school was either going to not be there or, or, or be there. And this is a case of helping that school actually be in our community and provide a service in the community.
Thank you. Further discussion? Dr. Robinson?
The, the State Department of Education does not recognize dyslexia as a disability. So the public schools have a very hard time serving that population. So Green Gate really does fill a significant void. And they're very successful at educating dyslexic children and putting them back in, in the school system. They, they really have a great record and a good, good method that they're using there. So again, I, I, I share your concerns, Mr. Russell, but, but it's, this is a good place for them. My concern, however, is that they are going to be occupying one-third of a building. And if the building's going to be two-thirds empty, the school system has found in their underutilized facilities where only a small part of the building is being used, that there are sometimes significant safety and security concerns that arise. So how, I, I know that there are folks who are interested in the rest of the building, but as Green Gate moves in and that, the rest of that building is vacant, are we going to make sure that measures are taken to secure the underutilized part of the building?
You're, you're absolutely correct. That is a concern. That's something that, that General Services is really the lead on, looking exactly what modifications need to occur to the building and the management of preparing it for, for us, you know, taking it over and then, and others occupying it. So there's a number of other organizations that will pretty quickly follow on the heels of Green Gate going in and occupying space. So the, the lease agreement has, has a floor plan, a site plan of the building. It shows you the portion they're taking. They, they will have the administrative spaces as well as the, kind of the two center wings. So they, they will be in a position where, where they, you know, have control of a major part of the building. The, the back portion that you may be familiar with, that is the newer part that was originally, you know, built for the special needs schooling. That and the, the, the older wing that is connected to, we anticipate at this point bringing you lease agreements for Village of Promise to take a portion, and the Boys and Girls Club, as well as the library taking another portion. I, I met with them, they're onsite about a week ago to walking through kind of how, how we see that occupation plan going. And both of them anticipate being prepared to move in, probably in the September, October timeframe. So, you know, Green Gate would be the kind of sole occupant for only about, you know, 30 to 60 days. There's also a portion of the building also on the front that, that is closest to our existing rec center that Parks and Rec will take over, the gymnasium and a couple of other rooms, the locker rooms and things at the front of the building. We don't have a specific date for them, but it'll be pretty quickly. And, and then we have, you know, the rec center's an active center that's immediately adjacent. So we have oversight throughout the open hours of the rec center on that campus. So there, there are people that are there. It doesn't really sit, you know, vacant a lot. So that is a concern, and, you know, as we look at, as Green Gate has looked at, what are the standards for a school securing itself? There are some additional doors and things that will be put in, security doors, that allow them to achieve the physical, the, the, the security standards required of a school and kind of segregate their part of the building away from the other. So those are very valid concerns or things that, that we're working on. And we'll, we'll maintain a presence there and continue to get more occupants in.
Mr. Kling?
I'm going to speak in support of it. I think it's a, I think it's a good plan. It's a good function because of the way all the pieces are coming together, as Mr. Hamilton was talking about. Worst thing that can happen to a neighborhood is to have an empty vacant school, just sit around. That was a concern that Low Mill had, and there's been a good outcome with that. That was a concern that Holiday Homes and other neighborhoods had concerning Stone Middle School. And look at the good outcome that's coming out of that. And I think this will be a good shot in the arm, you know, for the neighborhood over there. A lot of good services. Some of them will actually benefit, you know, the immediate residents of the neighborhood. Others are citywide. But it's, you know, I think it's a good plan. And with all the pieces that Mr. Hamilton are talking, was talking about are coming together, you know, I think it'll be a very good shot in the arm for, for the neighborhood. And we're probably going to lose a little bit on it. But again, taking into account the value of, you know, helping and supporting this neighborhood, I think it's, I think it's a good plan. And it looks like this is just the first step of many good things that are going to go to fill up the neighborhood. And that, and I think some of the arts activities that are taking place over there, I think will, you know, make this a good plan and a, a good first step toward hopefully many more to come.
Thank you. Further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? It carries. V is a resolution expressing the council's intent to appropriate a minimum of $500,000 in the fiscal year 2015, 2016 budget for startup of police department body cameras and sporting materials.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kling, a second by Mr. Culver. Discussion?
Mr. President, this would kind of piggyback with the resolution that we had previously passed. If the grant application works out, that is very good, outstanding news. If it doesn't, it states that the, the council joins the mayor. The mayor voiced his support a few minutes ago. But basically, in the fallback of the last two council meetings, people from the public had expressed desire for this program. It would just kind of step down as a bottom line that a minimum of 500,000, it could be 1.2 million, it could be even higher, but just that a minimum amount would be, excuse me, would be voted on by the, by the city council. And putting the budget together is, is good. The bottom line is the city council is the authority that has to vote on the budget. So if we say upfront that we heard from the public at the last two meetings, and it is our intent that the upcoming fiscal year will have a bottom line minimum of 500,000 dollars, I think that would be a good, a good step for two things. Number one, showing that we're listening to the concerns of the people of North Huntsville who have spoken at the last two council meetings. And two, I think it would show that we have confidence in our police officers because they're carrying those cameras on them. And it'll show how every day our police officers are out on the streets providing hundreds of benefits of services to the people of the city of Huntsville, that we have confidence in their abilities, the way that they maintain themselves. Whenever there's a controversial issue that comes up or questions are asked, for example, similar to a dash cam incident that we had a couple of years ago, there'll be visual documentation that I believe will exonerate the police officers and show that they acted properly in accordance with the responsibilities of their, of their position.
Further discussion? Dr. Robinson?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand the intent of this resolution because the, the original resolution A allocates $650,000 of money to the body camera program. Or commits, not allocate. It's the intent, it, it, the intent.
Correct.
Expresses the intent of the, because we can't allocate anything without a budget resolution. I understand that. So it, it identifies the intent of the, of the council to, to direct $650,000 at some point toward the body camera program. So how is this resolution different?
Okay. At the time, based on the previous discussions that were held at meetings, 500,000 was mentioned. I would support wholeheartedly a, an amendment by anyone to raise it to 650. The bottom line is the city council is the body that has to vote on the budget when the time comes. And this way, we are saying upfront, we're not going to wait and see whether the grant application is successful or not. And we've heard that there's an intent to put 650,000. thousand in from the mayor. This would say that it's the intent of the city council to vote for that appropriation, whether it's five-hundred thousand or six-hundred-fifty thousand in the upcoming fiscal year budget. And that would kind of, I think, put this issue to rest, because I know it's been dangling out there. Again, the bottom line is, we're the ones that have to vote on the budget. Mr. Joffreyon had come up with what I believe was the strongest that we could do under the circumstance. There's no way we can allocate money from a budget that we haven't passed yet. So, until we pass a budget, if the public knows, well, the council voted for this resolution, there's probably a pretty good chance the council's going to vote for that appropriation being included in the fiscal year budget. And if it's not in the budget, then it would be the council's intent to add it in.
And if I could chime in on that, in short, it is just kind of an insurance policy, for lack of a better description. I know the mayor's committed one-point-two million, and with that being said, I certainly, Mr. President, would like to amend this ordinance to reflect six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand Just in case.
If there's a second, then we can discuss that.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second to amend this to the amount from, to a minimum of six-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Is that your motion, Mr. Kling?
It's my motion.
I mean, Mr. Culver. A second by Mr. Kling, the amendment. Council members, this is just a good faith effort, I think, on Mr. Kling and Mr. Culver's part. Obviously, this is non-binding. We're going to have to discuss this at council time. So, I'm going to support whatever this is, because we've all committed we're going to get body cameras. And so, discussing whether it's five-hundred or sixty-five, six-hundred-and-fifty is all relevant, but if y'all want to do that, then I'll sit here and we'll listen. So, we have an amendment to make it six-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
Yes, sir.
Discussion on the amendment?
Well, I'll back off of that.
All those in favor?
I might have an auction in it.
Do I hear seven-fifty? All in favor of the amendment to raise it to six-hundred-and-fifty thousand? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, now it has been amended. Is there, do we need to have any more discussion on the main motion?
Mr. President, I know it's a resolution that's, you know, talking about the intent of the council without splitting hairs. I think all of us, and I think based on statements Councilman Schauer has made, I think all six of us are in favor of it. We're not just talking about it. Looks like it's going to be in the mayor's proposed budget that comes to the council. That's great. And I think you're basically hearing that if this were to pass, that all of the council are going to support it. So, that's a statement. We're not just talking one way or another. Looks like the upcoming fiscal year beginning, October, there's going to be a body camera program starting to be implemented and funded in the city.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Actually, this reminds me a little bit of the conversations we've been having over the last few months, as members of the citizens have stood up and said, "We want body cameras." And then, city council members have said, "We want body cameras." And the mayor has said, "We want body cameras." So, now, twice we're saying, "We want body cameras."
Oh, God, it's true. We want some body cameras.
Yeah, let's go ahead and vote and get them. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have three vacations of easement and one deed for acceptance. The chair moves to consolidate and approve those.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at non-roster communications for the public. Does anyone wish to address the council? Pastor Johnson?
TC Johnson, eighteen-hundred Sparkman Drive. I first want to thank you for the movement, the expeditious movement that you've done on the cameras. We shall attempt to cease from getting signatures, so you won't hear from us, but we would like reports periodically. Also, want to thank Mr. Hamilton for coming to inform us on things that were being enhanced in the north. Certainly appreciate the presentation that he gave. It was a little over time, but we still appreciate it, and Mr. Ivy also came with him. The second thing is, he told us that we're not getting independent business, and we understand you can't make independent businesses come to the north, and that was based on the income, the level of income, and we understood that. What we would like to know, though, if we can't get them on income, can we get them on tax sale? How much tax sales? And we've asked this before, can it be estimated how much tax value from north spenders go into the economy? If we can do that, maybe we can incentivize them by saying, "These people spend this much of sale tax." I don't know what it's possible to do it that way. I do have some other ideas, but this is the best idea. We can get that number that we've generally asked for on several occasions, so we could use the amount of money that's spent, because all research shows that African-Americans being more consumers than otherwise, and therefore, that's what we're dealing with. So, maybe that could be used if we could approximate the amount of tax that go into the system around Madison County Huntsville. Maybe we can talk about incentivizing them from that perspective. The third thing I wanted to ask about and say is, we commend the chief and thank him for the progress that we see in the police department over the years, and you too, mayor, as well. When I began to argue with the police force, we had no black captains. Now, we have two. The number that we have on the, in the department of African-Americans, of course, and minorities and females is not what we would like it to be. And I think we have an opportunity to understand, we're getting ready to appoint a new deputy chief, and we're on edge to see how that particular procedure goes, because we feel like if we show a greater diversity in upper leadership, sitting at the table to help chief work out what we can do to increase that number. We have to increase that number. It's not just the police department. There are other areas, and even Redstone Arsenal, is feeling this lack of diversity at very high levels. And I think our progressive leadership, we should look at being able to put a picture. And I think that will give African-Americans an incentive to say, "This police department is really serious about the changes that need to be made." So, I certainly hope chief will consider. He's changed it, and there's some other stuff he could do, given a particular choice of appointments that he makes. So, that's one of the things I want you to think about. And can I get one more minute?
Council members, is that okay? One more minute? One more minute?
Okay. And that was what I wanted to say about that. Now, I want to, I've been asking this question, so I rephrased it. If citizen A pulls a knife and opens it on and threatens citizen B, is it just impolite or is it a crime? And I'd like for that to be answered by those who know the law.
As you may want to take a crack at Pastor Johnson's hypothetical question, if citizen A pulls a knife on citizen B, is it a crime? Anybody know? I think you have to be there, Pastor Johnson. I don't know. I think the police officer have to be there and use his good judgment.
I just don't think it's wise for us to deal in hypotheticals. I think we can just respond to factual situations.
Thank you. Mr. Culver, if you want to take a stab at it, please go ahead.
I know the answer, but I'm going to refrain from stating the answer publicly. But if you look at Title thirteen A, the section under menacing, you could find something that will answer that menacing. If you look at Title thirteen A, Code of Alabama nineteen-seventy-five.
Ms. Reed?
Okay. I was just sitting there thinking, I should have had that ticket relaxed since I was a councilperson for the day up there one time. I mean, think about that, just for one day only. My question was, is, I wish that you had, when you put up the vehicle for hire, that should have been brought to a work session. There's a whole lot of questions out here that was not answered, and I hate to ask them, but it's saying five-thousand dollars per company. Are there certain length of cars that these companies can put on the streets? I never did hear that answered. It's a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars per vehicle for a license. Was that true? Maybe I didn't get my notes right. And how many vehicles can one company put on the streets? If we have ten companies and twenty-five cars, mercy. You're going to put the taxi cab drivers and limousines people out of business. I will have to say, though, our bus system's been lax and wrong and not good for the working people for many, many years anyway. We hadn't really cared too much about the working people out here, so I don't know if they can afford to ride these cars or not. And will the city be liable for anything if something happens since you all are a part of it? Something bad happens and some of these drivers just run up down the streets and y'all are not checking any of them, will the city have any liability in it? Who comes up with all this stuff from out of this city and comes up with all this new stuff? We're always wanting to be like New Orleans, Nashville, Chattanooga, and wherever you're from, Mr. Hamilton. All kinds of places. Who comes up with all this stuff? Why don't we think, is it you, Mayor Battle? Can I blame you with that? I thought you was from Huntsville. Anyway, I never heard of such stuff that we want to be like. We can't take care of what we got. Please, let's hire more police officers, get a safe city, get our roads paved like we need to do, and start thinking of some of the things that we need to take care of that we already got here. We need money put in a safe environment for this people, for the city of Huntsville. And if y'all raised that minimum a while ago and was trying to see who could outsmart the other on the body cameras, next year's election year, I'll put a million dollars from the budget in it. So, if that's what we're doing, making deals up there, count me in. Thank you.
Ms. Reed, whose spot did you park in? Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Whose spot did you park in?
It had Queen's name on it. Let me tell you something. Let me tell you something.
Mr. Brown, you got my support for reappearance.
Excuse me. I want to tell you, I got to tell you this. It's just crazy. I had a car for sale over on Bob Wallace, work showers, cling and cover, made me move. I had a car for sale, been sitting there on the corner in my apartment where I'm paying utility bill. I showed this car, I've taken it to work two or three times, and this ticket shows up last Saturday at that apartment. Now, the tag goes on Jack Coleman over there from that car, yet the ticket shows up over here on Bob Wallace, and...
They know where you live.
Ask Bill Kling. He asked me that on the Dale Jackson Show.
Ms. Reed, I've got to move on. I should have never started this. Sorry.
Don't start something, because I'll finish it. Thank you.
Mr. Hamilton, can you address? I know you had already answered these questions. Ms. Reed asked several questions about the number of vehicles and the five-thousand-dollar fee. Could you please explain those again?
And I'll tell you, I like Ms. Reed, and blessed to have had the opportunity to move from somewhere else and call Huntsville home now, and so, it's great to be here. So, the difference in the licensing fees, the five-thousand dollars is a flat fee for a T and C to get a license to operate here. And for the T and C specifically, there is not a limit on the number of cars or drivers that they can have that operate underneath that license. The hundred-and-twenty-five dollars per car fee is specific to the taxis. It is not, does not apply to T and Cs. The difference in that structure is an attempt to acknowledge the difference in the business models and the way they operate. And so, you know, the way in which they develop their fleet is different. So, there's a need for our ordinance to be structured to accommodate those differing business models, to allow those two different services. So, there is a limit on the number of cars that a taxi service can bring in, and the ordinance lays out how many they can have and then how many they can add per year. So, there's some structure to that in order to make sure there's a good balance within that particular sector.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council? Ma'am, if you state your name and address for the record, please.
Carol Courtney. I'm homeless. I don't have an address, but I have been reading a P.O. Box down Hazlen Post Office for about sixteen years, and that's P.O. Box four-six-five-three Huntsville, and the street address is eighty-four oh-one Whitesburg Drive.
Welcome.
Oh, hi. I have recently noticed a flyer at the Huntsville Times and at the library that you guys have got a plan that wanting to expand city services as far as buses and add Saturdays. Consider possibly adding Sunday morning. What percentage of the people that are arrested by the Huntsville Police Department go to church on Sundays or Saturday or Friday night? Also, public transportation to your major industrial sites. Bicycle, someone says. Okay. It's twenty degrees outside. You get to ride a bicycle for what, an hour or two? Stand on your feet for fif, you know, twelve hours? And the same thing back across town. Each time, consider when you start adding these different industrial sites, get the people to the sites. You have twenty-one percent of your population making less than fifteen thousand dollars a year. If people can financially support themselves, that will reduce government spending. Approximately fifty percent of the federal budget are in social programs. You can take a whack about thirty percent out of the federal budget, and it will reduce your crime and all this other stuff. A problem also in Huntsville in business is the job title of engineer. To be a legal engineer, you've got to have a bachelor's degree in engineering from an accredited university, and it, they're also got to be credited by the A B E T, American Board of Engineering Technology. There are companies doing business in Huntsville that will say that the minimum requirements for the job of engineer is a high school diploma. Engineering jobs are being filled by people without engineering degrees. And so, I don't know how many other professions this happens, but it is happening in Huntsville, and it's very common, and it's something that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council?
Move to adjourn?
Where adjourn?